So I call a meeting to at three oh five on the eleventh of April twenty twenty four. Let's see, so we're gonna have Devon and Amanda.
It's that in May ninth.
Oh.
Sorry.
It's just April eleven. Yeah.
For the record, for the record.
I mean, okay, very good. Take role, please.
Yes. Uh, Lou Andrade.
Here.
Dennis Waspe.
Here.
Chair Francisco Zermin.
Okay, uh, please introduce yourselves.
I would actually like to um do a roll call with prospective trustees.
Okay.
So in this case, Eric Henchey.
Here.
And um, Rita Duncan doesn't appear to be on the Zoom call starting the room, so not present today. And I can introduce the staff who are here. So we have Amanda Sanders and Andy Willis, which is the director of HHS. Ryan Lasko from HARD, we have Taylor Bishard, and Ken from the City of Hayward. And do we have anyone else on Zoom staff? Doesn't look like it. Okay. So thanks, everybody, for joining.
And yes, thank you all very much. Um, let's see, Eric, then we'll announce the staff members. This will present today's meeting is held pursuant to the Brown Act where members and staff are participating in person and publicly presented via phone conferencing. So public comments may be submitted one of two ways, and Devon will explain how.
Yes, and I also note that Nicole Witt, who is counsel with HSP Bridget, is joining us on the video today. So there are two ways to participate in HSP meetings. One is to send an email to Amanda Sanders, that's A. Sanders, at EB Parks by noon on the day of the meeting. The other is live via Zoom, so participate in the Zoom meeting and reach your hand at the appropriate time.
Do we have any public comments?
I do have one public comment that came in by email. It doesn't specifically say that it's a public comment, but it was in regards to certain portions of the packet, so I'll go ahead and read that.
Okay, alright.
Says, thanks for sharing this with me. Oh, I'm sorry, it's by Jennifer Cony. Thanks for sharing this with me, Eddie. I'm grateful that you included me after our discussion at the Week's Park Earth Day event. I was happy to see an attachment pre-table two regarding community engagement efforts, or events, that the Hayward Shoreline Interpretive Center, its correct full name, is listed under HARD as a site for possible future public engagement events for HSP. I'd also like to point out that the Hayward Shoreline Interpretive Center has both full-time and part-time interpretive staff dedicated to educating the public about the shoreline. So perhaps there is an opportunity to integrate educating the public about HSP through its current and future educational programs beyond just one-time events and tabling, an idea for your consideration.
Okay, this is Jennifer Cony from a hundred thousand six, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. She used to be a staff person.
Oh, she was. I didn't know that. Okay. Alright, any other public comments? And none here? Okay.
And I would just like to note that Robbie Perry, who is park supervisor for Carywood Shoreline, has joined as an attendee of the meeting, and also Maria is on the meeting.
Supervisor.
And the meeting is being recorded currently, yes.
Amanda, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alright, um, of course, you're allowed pretty much to speak, but we don't have anybody at the moment. Uh, we did receive one email that's been read. So the first item, item in business is approval of the minutes of April eleventh twenty twenty four meeting. Um, do we have any comments, any public comments on this first? None? Okay, motion?
I move.
Second? Alright, very good. We need roll call on this?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
We have roll call. Trustee Andrade?
Yes.
Trustee Waspe?
Yes.
Chairs of venue?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
We now go on to item number two, and item number two is project updates from the City of Hayward.
I have nothing to report.
So you're big saving, there's nothing?
Nothing today, David.
Well, thank you very much. I gather there are no public comments, so I have nothing to report. Okay, alright, so we've got, we're going on to item number three. An important action item, consideration of an alternative joint exercise of powers agreement in the event Oraloma Sanitary District decides not to join HSP. Uh, presentation, please, there?
Yes, thank you, Chair Zerminio. So we have some great news to share, that two of the prospective four agencies have now voted to join HSP, so that's uh, this board, Hayward Area Wreck and Parks, and Alameda County Mesquite Abeyment, as of yesterday and the day before. So we are well on our way to having the four, if not five-member agency that we have been working towards. We have upcoming uh, the votes for the City of Hayward, East Bay Regional Park District, and a consideration by Oraloma Sanitary District. But the motion and the JPA, the Joint Powers Authority Agreement that was adopted at this last meeting, included Oraloma. And we've now had a board meeting and some private discussions with Oraloma board members, and it's possible that they may choose not to join at this time. So if that's the case, we needed to have a document that this board adopted that took Oraloma out of the JPA, the legal agreements. And so that's what's in the packet today. It's an alternative insofar as it, it projects a a possibility that Oraloma may not proceed at this time with HSP. Of course, we hope they will, and we'll have a meeting on June eleventh to decide. So I did want to share, there's the motion, um, just that, I'll go back to the motion in a minute. And Nicole, I'll be done in a second, and we can fill in anything up in this. I will note that the, the map had to be revised, so the HSP agencies map, the one with the colors, that got revised. Uh, the JPA agreement itself took out a few mentions of Oraloma and Sanitary District. This map got revised to remove Oraloma. And the fee schedule will change, so I just want to just point this out for full transparency. The Joint Powers Authority Agreement that got adopted at our last meeting had this five-member structure with these dues. If Oraloma chooses not to join, then we'll have a four-agency structure with these dues. For HARD, City of Hayward, and Park District, our dues will go up just a little bit, and it turns out that the Mesquite Abeyment District dues will go down. But there's the percentages and of the difficulty. So let me just go back to show you all the schedules, so Oraloma originally had a board meeting on April sixteenth, that's when these kind of questions about should we join or not came up. And then HARD had its meeting. The Abeyment, Mesquite Abeyment had their meeting, upcoming will be June fourth, and as it turns out, there'll be two meetings on that day, and then Oraloma meeting on June eleventh. So let me stop there, and Nicole, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you've covered it.
Okay, so we have sort of a longer motion, let me just read it out loud. There's uh, that, the, the move, the motion is that the HSP Board of Trustees approve the alternative JPA, which is attachment two in this document, in this packet, which will be the effective agreement between the parties governing HSP, if approved only by the East Bay Regional Park District, City of Hayward, the Hayward Area Wreck and Park District, and the Alameda County Mesquite Abeyment District. If the JPA adopted by the HSP trustees on April eleventh twenty twenty four is approved by the East Bay Regional Park District, City of Hayward, Hayward Area Wreck and Park, and Alameda County Mesquite Abeyment District, and the Oraloma Sanitary District, the alternative JPA, the one in your packet, will have no force. So let me leave it at that for now.
Okay, questions, please?
I don't have a question, but I do have an update from, from our board. Uh, we, they, they did indeed adopt it, but they adopted it with one, with one condition, and it was a, it was raised by our Director Landman, and it was that to, to strike and change uh, kind of towards a gender-neutral references within the document. So I just want to show you.
Oh, yeah, let me stop sharing.
Yeah. Show you really quickly, there's, I think there's three locations, let's see, let's share screen for.
I need to make you a couple those real quick.
Okay. So it's, it's this kind of language in the, in the document where trustee served at the pleasure of his or her governing body and changing that to their, or, you know, he or she is changing that to they are. So that's, that's the only qualifying, and if there's a, I think there's a.
She's being consistent because they, that was just all happening at the city council meetings.
Yes.
That's fine.
So that's, that was the condition that, that the board adopted.
So it was adopted by you all?
Yes.
And, alright, so that was, any other questions? No? Questions, please?
So with this alternative, we have to go back to, well, I have to go back to the board, or, you know, the hard board again. That change.
No, and Nicole can explain why.
Quick, get the lawyer, it's alright.
Our understanding is that all of the agencies, but for Oraloma, because Oraloma um, hasn't, has continued this item until June, all of the agencies have framed their adoption of the JPA to give them flexibility to go with either the version that was adopted by the board on the eleventh, or the alternative version. We've spoken with staff and we've gotten confirmation that they feel that they have adequate flexibility there.
Thanks for the reminder. Any comments or questions on the package itself?
Uh, just, I think this is a good compromise, I think it's a shame, but I hope we I'm glad we're moving forward and not staggering and stopping and starting and stopping against.
I did go to the meeting on the sixteenth, I believe, you know, you know, they.
Oraloma?
Oraloma, yeah. And I wasn't able to persuade them, so, I mean, they're kind of, they're, they were apologetic, you know, that they, but they just didn't feel they're ready for it, so. See what happens.
Uh, my one question, would it be uh good for, like, say, he visited, did you visit? Should I visit? That, what do you think? One of their, one of the board meetings?
The upcoming meeting is June eleventh, and if you were available, it would be valuable.
Okay, alright.
Eleven.
Maybe you can email me where, okay, sure.
Um, to be clear, that's their joint, annual joint meeting with Castrodale Cemetery Board, so it's the two boards meet together once a year.
But it's on your, it's on your agenda, so.
It is, and, but, yes, this HSP agreement is on there.
Okay, I can, for the comments, and I can say something. Alright, okay, send me.
And I'll be there as well.
Oh, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Before we go on, we have two new folks, could you, can we have you introduce yourselves, please?
Eric Exteo, Alameda County Mesquite Abeyment District.
Uh, Toku Hankins, a nonprofit plantified.
Thank you. So any other questions on the draft alternative? I, I agree with, with you in the sense that this is good, we can stop it, we're continuing, and, you know, in case it happens that they decide not to, we're ready for that eventuality. Nicole, thank you very much for the work on it. Alright, and were there many instances of his, her, that, no? It's just a, it's just a two, two pages, page ten and page fifteen. Wow, alright. Any comments on, by PAC on this? No? Any comments from you?
Fine, no one. They're really enthusiastic about doing this, so.
I love it. I knew it was a nice.
Eric has a really nice show, does anything else, like?
Oh, excellent, alright, Eric's a good guy. Any, Amanda, any public comments on this? I don't see anything here, any online?
Nothing online.
Okay, so this is an easy one.
Well, we do need a motion.
Yes.
Let me get to the language, let me put it back on the screen.
Yes. You don't have to repeat the motion.
No, I don't. We can just move.
Because it's kind of long.
Yes. So the motion is on the screen now.
Alright.
And will we approve the alternative JPA?
Right.
Next second?
Very good, and I believe we're gonna take roll call, I strongly support it too.
Yes. Uh, Director Waspe. Uh, Trustee Andrade.
Yes.
And Chairs of venue.
Chief.
And motion passes.
And he'll be able to vote when?
So the new HSP board will meet on July eleventh, for the first time. You will, you and your alternate are welcome, she's welcome to come, but that will be the first sitting of the new board.
That's where we're gonna show the secret handshake.
Excellent, most excellent. We now go over to, so thank you for the good work on this, Devon and staff, and Nicole, thank, thank you again for the.
Thank you all.
Tyler and McKenna, they've actually worked on it, fantastic. Uh, we now go over to item four, adoption of public agency community outreach program. I must say, I was impressed by this. I, 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 wow, I even showed my wife, look what we're gonna do, as she goes, okay, tell me more about it.
Alright, that's good. Well, this is on page thirty-four of your packet.
Yes.
Uh, you remember that staff has been working and brought to the previous meeting a public agency and community engagement plan to both through HSP's board trustees, the technical advisory committee, and just generally educate the public about what HSP is, and that there is this agency, and that we're working for climate adaptation. So now we're bringing you something that takes all the good input that we've received from you all, and from us on the technical advisory committee, and even from Oraloma's board, and we've put it into documents that we're looking for a motion to adopt. So just to explain, table one, are the public agencies that staff will be pursuing either to bring onto the board or the technical advisory committee. In some cases, some board, uh, some agencies are not appropriate on the board because they're funding agencies that we might approach at some point. Uh, so we would like them on the tack for their expertise. On, uh, then there's another set of private and nonprofit organizations, all of which we are proposing join the technical advisory committee, or at least that we would approach that way. So we're up to like twenty-six different entities here.
Right.
That's a lot of um a lot of phone work on our part, but we're looking for, from you all, your contacts at these companies, public agencies, you know, we want to get to the right person, right away. So I won't read the list because it's in the table. And then the second part, our community engagement events, table two. This will grow over time, I was thinking that, you know, every four, every quarter, well, basically, we meet every quarter, so every meeting, I could bring an update on how this
Yes.
list is growing.
Please.
And we need your help to tell us about events, but I thought I would turn to my colleague Eddie, just to report back on the City of Hayward Earth Day event that we had.
Oh, sure, um, so Devon and I represented HSP at the um April twentieth Earth Day event at Week's Park in Hayward. Saw lots of smiling faces, um people with litter sticks picking up around the park, making the, um, the area more beautiful. Good food, um, good music, and we had lots of really great discussions. I remember speaking with, you know, a former HARD staff member about the Interpretive Center, and we got some new contacts, and we passed out some information um, about not only HSP, but about East Bay Parks, about HARD, about the City of Hayward and, and our other partners, and overall, it seemed like a very nice, successful event.
And I would add that Plantify was a contact that we made at this Earth Day event, so welcome for Plantify. Do you want to take a minute and explain what your organization is?
Sure. Thank you, um. Nice to meet you all, um, yeah, so we're based over in Cherryland, uh, North Hayward, and we formed last year as a five oh one C three. Our mission is to connect people to nature, and through initiatives of democratizing access to nature, we've been working with a lot of educators, local schools, mostly in like the unincorporated, and also in Hayward and Ketch Valley area. And then, uh, we do outdoor education, just most recently, we took a fifth grade class from Cherryland Elementary. Uh, thank you for the EB Parks Transportation Support Services, uh, we were able to uh, cover that as an org, as a charity aspect of our programs, and brought them to Sibley, and it was a wonderful experience for a lot of the graders, uh, at Cherryland Elementary. We also do um uh, workshops, I like to call them biophilic workshops, uh, they're kind of horticulture, bringing kind of the intersection of horticulture and ecology, understanding, there's a framework. But, uh, we work with local nonprofits as well, uh, locally here, it's downtown streets team. We also work with local churches, so, uh, we're kind of filling, filling up the community. I'm born and raised in Hayward area, so this is kind of nice to be able to serve this area as well, so.
Are you going to join our TAC?
Um, I'm not familiar with the process of that.
We can talk offline, that's our technical advisory committee.
Okay.
Um, we call the TAC, and we can talk about whether or not you'd be interested.
Sure, yeah, about that.
It will return this, and I love the name Plantify.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
You have any questions for him?
I went to your house on Saturday, was that?
Yeah, bringing back the natives, yeah, we're, our gardens were selected to be on a tour, promoting native plants and ecological benefits, um, through the larger network, bringing back the natives, and, uh, guess what we had? Years on.
And that's the fact that you work with our justice, if there is one, so we have to get introduced, introduced to this, over the face, absolutely, and change the, you know, the plant friendly, et cetera.
Yeah.
Thank you for the question. Again, I invite you to join us in chat.
Okay.
It would have. Alright.
I was also like that, and I, uh, we're finishing a park at Ashland, uh, it's gonna be the Ashland Sokolow, East Fourteenth and One Hundred and Sixty-Sixth, and, uh, in partnership with Trust for Public Lands, it's one of our two partnerships, and that's something that'll look forward to connecting you to them, because I think they, they would, you have a nice neat fit that would work well with Trust for Public Lands, you know, they're a very large national organization for parks, building parks throughout the country, uh, but one of their components, the, for the two parks that they're working with us is in school outreach. And we actually, they made a strong connection with the Druids Club out of San Lorenzo, Ohio.
Right.
And then they just actually were just, they must have had twenty students yesterday planting, planting the plants that the contractor laid out for them, and so we're just, it was just, it was great, it was really fantastic. Yeah, so, but it's something that I think there's a synergy there, I don't know if you're, you must be familiar with, you know, Druids Club.
I have recently made contact with Allie.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But it's a such a popular group, I was really surprised to see how many students they were able to bring to.
Besides native plants?
Uh, yes, like biodiversity is.
Major, fantastic, now, right? Uh, so before we go, or the comments, if there are any, any comments on board?
You know, his house, it was a nice example, but it's.
So what were you doing in his house?
Well, he had an open house, I'm sorry.
Oh.
He had an open house, and, uh, so he had, it was that, they had rained and, and it came right after the rain, so there's a lot of people.
And he does have any pets, or he's not lying?
It's all meat. I was not lying, I mean, he's a few succulents, though, otherwise, and he has two girls.
That's good, that's neat.
Keep me in check.
You live in Hayward?
Uh, Cherryland.
Oh, in Cherryland? Okay, so you can be part of the program that we have, so we award front yards that are really special and green, so, oh, well. Any comments on this?
Uh, yes, Paul Disco's arrived at Toku's house last week also, and the Bring Back the Natives tour, and it's.
I might have wasn't invited.
If you were, you should have been there, everybody else is, they're all your friends better. And got lots of natives, got lots of animals, like, just, it, uh, everything we're looking for, and, I mean, you know, uh, specifically, you know, when we do stuff on the shoreline, we've got a lot of shoreliners, we do a lot of experimental things with horizontal levees, which takes lots of plantings, I mean, massive plantings, so. You know, that might be right up your alley.
Well, that's a good project for it.
Actually, it's reminding me, so, just so you can hear as well, um, the Druids are having a native plant sale of this Saturday at San Lorenzo, at their, at their hard yard in the San Lorenzo High, so, ten to one, Saturday, this Saturday.
And just yesterday, I planted another succulent. Beautiful flower.
You're officially invited now.
Anything else? Any, and, anything on the list of people that we're gonna have Plantifying on this list? Alright.
You know, I was just thinking, uh, like, the plants, the horizontal levee that Don Edwards has a nursery, you know, over there by, uh, by the, the barbed bridge. With this, all these native plants and stuff, and, um, I don't know, I mean, uh, they're sort of, probably sister agencies, I was, I was wondering if they should be aware of our existence and.
And with that in mind, go also Western Gardens. You know?
Because, because I would think, but I mean, these, they specialize in, in the shoreline plants. So maybe a thing where, you know, if you have a special word, they can start planning.
So the background, what was the organization?
It's, uh, Don Edwards, uh, you know.
National, yeah.
Wildlife Refuge, it's right by the ocean, they have greenhouse, and they have, they have volunteers that do greenhouses. I think, you know, if you, you know, if you knew there was gonna be something there, they would probably be double planning or whatever, you know, so, whatever, they're sort of set up.
Great, we'll contact them.
Yeah.
Good.
So, uh, what about the universities, uh, Cal State?
Cal State, Chabot's close. And we will have nice gardens, and they'll kind of be greener, actually, so, it looks good.
Cal State East Bay Chabot College?
Yes, Cal State Hayward, EB. And then also, Tenth and High School has a green team. And of course, they have huge community gardens, so that may be another one, and I can get to contact you all.
Okay, Tenth and High School?
Yeah. And then as far as activity, well, so the list is very good, so just events, I have a couple of ideas, I'll throw them out. Uh, San Diego has Cherry Festival. First, we get Cherry Festival in San Diego, it's green, it's plants, so that's possible. Have we thought of occasionally going to a farmer's market? Hayward has farmer's market in Saturday, I don't know when, uh, San Diego, San Diego has Saturday, but that may be a possibility. And then Chabot has a huge, uh, flea market on the third Thursday of the month. Third Saturday of the month, and that may be also a good possibility. And then, and then, of course, the air, uh, airport open houses at Hayward, it's a huge, five thousand, five, six thousand people. Airport open house, will we take over the airport and move that, I mean, a good place for us to show what we have and what we do.
What time of year does that happen?
September. September, huh?
Yeah.
September. Yes. And Kennedy Park, you know, if you, there's always a youth crowd on Sat- Saturdays, it's a nice day.
And Kennedy Park.
Kennedy Park, and it's right near the shoreline. And actually, San Lorenzo, it's been pretty popular too. And, you know, if, if you didn't have a man kiosk, if you wanted to do a display, that would be
Right.
Like a whole, that might be, because there's, there's tons of tech native, they come all over the area.
Right, that's, that's true. And then I asked earlier, when HSP was founded, and so it's December nineteen seventy, and then going back to your idea of maybe having an annual huge event, uh, maybe having a HSP-iversary, HSPs, HSP-ration, where in December we put out what we have, we invite folks to come over and find out what we do, et cetera, it's a annual event. Um, Interpretative Center, Kennedy Park, somewhere, but the Interpretative Center would be good. I saw the photo with all those folks at the Interpretative Center, and let's be out there, you know, this is our birthday, it's to celebrate.
Yeah, there's one more organization that might be, so be the Hayward Historical Society. It's, you know, they, they, uh, I mean, they offered, uh, family donated to them, you know, uh, they, when they passed away, and that, so they keep it solid, it's all nice, and so they, uh, we just.
Excellent, thank you, I will add all of these ideas. Excellent, thank you, I will add all of these ideas.
We also have a Hayward Arts Council that drew a lot of painting of plants and drawings. So, maybe, I don't know, they were arts council, and they get money from Hayward, so they might be saying, participating one way or another. Okay.
We're brainstorming, with Aisha's group, Aisha Knowles, the, um, Russell City group, I mean, they're right there, they're as close as it could be. I don't know what they can offer, other than support and more inclusivity and, uh, progress.
Yeah. Absolutely. And maybe if we have a hospub celebration, we can invite them to show what Russell City is all about. Okay. Uh, there is a Juneteenth celebration coming up in June. It is on June twenty-second, Saturday. There at each plaza. Move the opportunity. And you know about the streetlights?
Yes.
Let's get out there, let's tell people who we are and what we do, because it's for their benefit, well, and ours too. I love this, this is good. Yeah. All right, um, anything, any other comments? No? Comments on move? No? Okay, so, Amanda, do we have any uh, other comments online?
No, we don't.
So we do need a motion to approve, yes.
So, you need a motion to.
We have some really motion, yeah. This is an island.
To pre-work, you mean? Oh, I see, I wish ones.
Yeah. That's just information. No, it's adoption of public agency and community outreach program. Item four. Excellent, thank you, uh, and I'm square a hundred percent, roll call.
Okay, trustee Andrade?
Yes.
Trustee Wasby?
Yes, Chair Zamanian.
Okay.
We now are on old business, back and forth, recruitment effort for additional trustee agencies, we kind of, have seen this.
Yes.
Community engagement activities, we have seen this also.
Yes.
Uh, that's excellent. Uh, but I'm glad it was specially keyed on item four, so that's excellent, from now on, they'll be part of this.
Correct, right.
Okay. Uh, item number six is new business, back and forth, updates on trustee agency capital projects. Six A.
But this is a placeholder in case any trustee agencies want to let people know about projects that are either in design or in construction or opening. Like Brian mentioned about the new parks.
Hmm.
Do you have anything in this particular area?
Anything in this particular area?
We're building big fish tanks to grow mosquito fish.
Ooh. You grow the mosquito fish?
Well, we already have, they're, they're building a new shelter for them. Need a few fish, you know where they come from.
See, something like that needs to be told to folks, you have a couple of photos, you know, whatever.
Examples?
Are they edible?
No.
Well, I suppose, I know, you fry them, you know, with the, you know.
Figure for the, that's it.
Okay. Right, legs. Okay, that's a, that's a good idea, all right, give us some, give us photos, bring some photos next time.
Okay.
Okay, I was gonna say, uh, Brian, we, you wanna talk about that uh, East Street project, we got a grant for that.
That's right, we, just, just up the street from here, there's a historically old lot that goes through between D and E Streets.
On Caltrans.
It was, one of them was a Caltrans, yeah, I guess, I guess they both were, yeah, part of it. You know, the deal, two thirty-eight, and one, the D Street side, we, we procured directly from Caltrans. On the East Street side, they had, they had already sold it off to a developer that wasn't able to make it work, so we were able to procure the entirety of the, kind of through block, and it's gonna become part of the trail effort to get, you know, from the San Lorenzo Trail up to, up the ridge, you know, to the, to the Ridge Trail. So, it's a really kind of a seriously fortuitous key acquisition.
In Silver Creek, that's the.
And Silver Creek comes down through the middle of it.
Hmm.
Um, and then we just received a, I, I don't even remember the amounts, but I was gonna say six or seven hundred thousand dollar grant to, to, to actually do the kind of renovation, cleanup and renovation of property.
But we've gotten several, we got a little million dollars in other grants from, you know, so it's a, it's a nice project, it'll be mostly natural area, uh, or large part is natural, and then, you know, lawn, meadow, big area, I guess, playground, visual stuff, you know. And so it'll be a nice addition to that neighborhood, because it's, it's an underparked area.
It is underparked, but I, yeah, but I can't even stress how fortuitous it was to kind of get it, because as mentioned before, we've got this twenty-seven million dollar grant to do the San Lorenzo Creekway in partnership with the Cal, Calma County Plan.
Oh, yeah.
So we're doing that, that's a major east-west uh, pedestrian and bike connection between Don Castro to, to the bay, um, and this, this will then, will start to breathe out, and start to take the trail up.
It includes cleaning the creek?
Uh, we don't, it's a, it's a trail right now, but it's something that, it's something that we're considering, and we're actually going, I think they're, they're putting together yet another grant package to go after, something like that.
To clean the creek.
Yeah.
There is a, a pillar of Hayward High School in creek itself. I would love to pull it out. And put it in our, uh.
A pillar?
Yeah, a pillar.
An actual?
An actual old pillar, semi-covered by, well, almost covered by water.
How do you, how, how do you know about this semi-covered pillar in the middle of the creek?
Well, I'm on over. Uh, Mary Nad, Nadal, then Bruce Roberts and I, along with uh, uh, Sandoval, Guy Sandoval, formed the Save the Age Committee. There's a H up on the, so we formed it, we saved it, we've got trees around it, and then we, at the bottom, we found the patio with bricks, et cetera. Then we said, well, we need to gather some material that will remind us of, of Hayward High School, which was the third prettiest high school in the United States when it was around, okay? And one day, there it was, there was that cover, I go, damn, how do I get it out, it's a little heavy for me, so that's why I asked, if it's something for cleaning the creek, it may be a good idea to help us bring it out and have us place it at the patio.
So is it, it's on this D and E, in the, in that area, the, the open one?
What's a D and E?
By the Japanese garden there.
Yeah.
Near uh, uh, at the bottom, near the Japanese garden.
Oh, is that by the, like, down there, by the Japanese, okay.
Yeah, okay, which is close to where the high school was, so I imagine some guy.
It was the, oh, the old parking, it's now, it is now the DMT parking lot.
Theater, yeah, so. I have a photo of it someplace. We got a kick out of it, wow, let's go touch history. Okay, so then again, okay, trees, can you tell them about, I, I mentioned trees before, I know we're not into trees, but I think you'll agree, that maybe somewhere on the shoreline, we can find a space for trees, because it'll help, uh, you know, raise everything and protect us a little better. Can you tell, do you wanna tell us about the grant that we applied for?
I don't know where, oh, what, America might be aware of this, or my, this is the tree canopy?
Yeah, well, well, yeah, we applied for a million and a half dollar grant for planting trees, a million and a half for planting trees. Asking if I'm happy, okay? Uh, so, I'm wondering if maybe Hospa could say, hey Hayward, would you maybe wanna send over a couple of bucks, so in certain areas of our shoreline, we could plant some trees. I don't know, have, has anybody studied whether trees can help our, our, our object?
I don't think there's any natives, there was no native species of trees on the long, that Hayward shoreline, I have like native living there. But we could explore planting them in the industrial.
Somewhere near, hmm, yeah, I mean, I think they would help, but you, you toured the, did you know it?
I agree with Taylor, I don't know, I mean, a tree on the shoreline are usually low-lying, not that attractive, they gotta be resilient with all the stuff they have to take, so, uh, you know, I personally, I, I love the idea of trees, I mean, I would put back on the city of Hayward, I would require anybody that builds anything, it's one tree per, per square foot of, uh, I would acquire that, um, and if we have a better shore.
Yes.
But you know, I mean, I, I, I've always thought of a memorial grove, I mean, I don't think you'd get away with saying, we're gonna plant the shoreline, because every naturalist, environmentalist, or, or a culturalist to go, wait a minute, what are you talking about? But we, we can plant a memorial grove if somebody, um.
Well, you have, you have it up in the area where the dump was, and that might be, I don't know, maybe, of course, there's a barrier.
Would, would it help our objective of protecting the shoreline, that's really my question? Would, would, I need trees somewhere, protect, help us protect the shoreline. That, that needs to be researched by someone, whether you, you're into mosquitoes, maybe you don't know, and I really don't know either, right?
Okay, I will ask our experts.
Yeah, and thank you for that.
The whole stewardship staff, someone will know.
Someone will know. Yeah, so, someone will know.
It's had to be horizontal trees. It's pretty.
There are no such thing.
Well, at, at San Lorenzo Park, three words up.
Any other comments on item six A? Uh, no, item six B, locations for future twenty twenty-four board meetings.
Yes, I wanted to bring this up officially, um, we have been exploring the possibility of having our two next meetings at the city of Hayward and the council chambers, although we have a warm welcome to stay here. So I just wanted to check in with Taylor to see if there's been any.
First, I'm looking, I haven't gotten one yet.
Okay, so, it really is nice to be in the city chamber, maybe just room two A.
Yeah, that's what we were.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm too late.
Yeah, we, you know, we have our business side, but also, um, the Mount Eden Mansion, you know, where the foundation.
That's another good place.
Which is on, yeah, the Tennyson Road, and the Tennyson, it's part of the, uh, it was the Oliver House, uh, before, so it has a little history there. But, uh, they have, uh, well, they can, it's a regular boardroom, and there's, yeah, it's a regular.
There's a large table, that's where the foundation.
Yeah, and also they have.
The hard foundation, that's their offices.
And I think they have, uh, electronics upstairs, you know.
I haven't been in there since.
Because they just redid it, right?
Yeah.
It should, it should fit.
But maybe.
And it has the trunks.
Yeah, sure. Is the shoreline interpreter center out?
I don't think it has electronics.
I mean, we, we, you know, we've been there a couple times, just, it's, it's not as sophisticated as, you know, anything, very, very, it's just all hotspots and with spotty, you know, spotty wifi. But I mean, it is right in the heart of the beast, or, I mean, I think if we are gonna bring people in and try to get them to become members of House, but we'd probably say, why don't you come to one of our meetings?
Yes.
You know, it was here, this is a beautiful facility, but if you take them right down there and say, look out that window, see what you're gonna protect, this is your legacy. Then it might be a little better of a deal, and, and you know, I, I don't wanna watch me quay any public comment, so do we need, we don't have to zoom our meetings, do we? I have to, and I, I don't wanna, you know, push anybody away, but by law, if, you know, we could figure out a way to call in, in the old days, what did we do before COVID? You would either show up, or you would call in, or you'd send an email, and we'd read your email, I mean, you do have a voice. And, you know, I remember teleconferencing.
Yeah.
In back in the old days, when somebody, where somebody had put a phone out there and pushed a button, and disconnected, and it would be terrible, but it is a way that, uh.
I think the shoreline is a good look.
Shoreline's the best place in the world, I mean, and you know, we could, we could branch off of that, I mean, showing on your deals, I think if we have a celebration, I would wanna do it in December, I'd say, heck, we can change history, we, we found it on August third of nineteen seventy. And have a, have a run, Harv used to have a run there every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was very successful, you know, there's nobody on that road, everybody can park, everybody can congregate, everybody can run on the beautiful shoreline, and you all have a big celebration down there.
Celebrate whatever they do want.
That's right. And maybe, but maybe we actually, you know, maybe have us spend some, some decent, some money towards like helping to approve, like, the broadcasts. I mean, it's, it's really just, frankly, it's a function of hardware, decent hardware, you know, don't, it wouldn't be that much of an investment, I think, to get some sort of you know, something to approve it.
I, I, going, uh, was, the room is, it's got chairs and everything, it's just not quite as comfortable, but, but it's not, it's not bad.
No, it's not.
So this year's our forty-sixth anniversary, correct? From seventy to now?
No, fifteen fifty.
Fifty-six?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Well, let's round it off to a nice.
Okay, so, so, so it sounds like you're going to come up with a plan, and so the next four, six meetings is where there will be.
Yes.
Hmm, okay. And look back to them about.
Room A.
Yeah, room A, and then come up with other places, and this place is good, too?
Yes.
Anytime.
I, I just give a comment, um, a public comment.
That was my next question.
On, actually on, uh, item A, the, uh, we were talking about, uh, tree stabilization of the shoreline, and Robbie Perry, um, sent me a message that said that trees are not, are usually not encouraged throughout the shorelines.
Okay.
Uh, because they provide raptor purchase for birds and foxtons, um, and those predators usually, uh, eat or threaten endangered species.
All right.
Just wanted to let you know that.
And, and Kim?
He's on the line.
All right, okay, thank you, Robbie. All right, let's see, anything else on six B?
Planting? When are you gonna make t-shirts? Look at that pink logo, that's one of the most beautiful.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for my, I'm waiting for my pin. Yeah. I like the t-shirts, uh, fifty-sixth anniversary of Hospa, right there, okay, that'll get on.
Okay, I will work on it.
Amanda will help you, so that's no problem.
I'll do these as a sign.
All right, all right. So that brings us to item number seven, board member announcements, please, empty?
Uh, just please, you're all invited to our big gala party on Saturday at Lake Chabot, Freezer Park District's ninetieth anniversary.
I sent you a note that I can't, because we have an all-day budget meeting at two o'clock. My, my, my. That's a party. As long as they have good food and cookies. Anything for you?
Nothing, no, I mean, we're, we're celebrating eightieth, but, uh,
No parties yet.
But we have, we have a series of different events, so it's not like a one. Let you know.
Yes. Any, you know, nothing, no, nothing at all?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
No, okay, I, I, I will go out on the line in the announcements, any announcements, no?
I just say that we, like, I mentioned the park, the, the Ashland Sokolo, we're gonna have a grand opening, it's on June thirteenth. And it's gonna be a, a big deal, because
Where?
It's at the corner of East Fourteenth and One Hundred and Sixty-Sixth.
Oh, it's Sokolo?
Yeah.
The restaurant?
Yeah, no, no, it's not a restaurant, it's a park, it's a plaza.
Oh.
It's, it's deliberately, it's, it's the project that we're doing with Trust Republic Lands, it's a big deal, so, and it's because, because this site, it's, it was a site that was procured by, um, the county, um, and Supervisor Miley was, you know, trying to, for years, trying to get something to happen there with, with the community development. We ended up doing a swap for a small piece of land that Harv had bought to help make the Cherryland Project work, and we swapped that land for that land, so we took ownership of, of the parcel, it's a, just under an acre on the corner, and, uh, so it's right next to Chevron Station in McDonald's, you might know it.
And it's called Sokolo?
It's Ashland Sokolo, yeah.
Oh, wow.
And it's, go down East Fourteenth, you cannot miss it, because there's a very, what will become a very iconic shade structure right on the corner, that is in pinks, oranges, and yellow.
Yeah, wow.
It's a, it's a pretty amazing structure.
June thirteenth.
And one of the densely, most densely populated corners of our district.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Have any announcements? No, announcements?
Um, just, a- as trustee Wasby said, uh, Park District's birthday party this coming Saturday, we'll, we'll be there representing the planning
department and our next free planning efforts. Excellent. Amanda, any announcements?
I'll be there, too.
Fantastic, you're announcing that.
I really have no announcement, I have no announcements, except that today, well, we really went for it, we really did a lot of good stuff today, that's really tremendous, I'm very happy. On, let's see, July eleventh is our next meeting, we do not know where yet. Uh, we're gonna talk about the budget, we're gonna talk about, uh, administrative consultant, and then also climate adaption, adaptation agencies, and then October tenth, we're dealing with the climate action again, hosped ministry consultant, and TAC by us.
Yes, just a preview of what the meeting terms will be, just wanted. Yes, just a preview of what the meeting will be, just wanted to clarify that. The budget has been talked about in conceptual ways, but we haven't actually brought you a budget to consider. So that's what we'll do, and we'll work it through the TAC first, and then we'll bring that on the July. Operating budget, we're approximating about a hundred and five thousand dollars, and that's our first year. And then we need to give you a scope of work, so, and a draft request for proposals for. A administrative consultant, so that Eddie and I can, um, do different work for Hospa, and we can let some of the more routine work be done by a consultant. Plus that, we have a very ambitious, uh, community engagement strategy, we need some assistance with that.
Very ambitious indeed.
So, all of that will be coming in July, and that will be the first meeting of the new board.
Excellent, and by then, we should know if our aroma will be with us.
We will certainly know, yeah.
Yeah, by then.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. If there's nothing else. There is, on, on May, no, sorry, on July eleventh.
July eleventh, okay.
Thank you very much, have a good drive home.
Thank you.
Nice and warm, huh?
Yeah.